...in creation of an advisory with the museum complex. So then we've got several guests here for this, a lot of work going into this. I'll let you introduce our guests.
Yes, sir. First of all, just to close my legs because as we had started this conversation in line with our conference plan that we're getting ready to adopt tonight, either written or relooked at our, uh, conference plan tonight, I want to talk about just that museum board members. And one of the things we talked about in line with our complex efficiency, collective efforts, and unified vision. And when I had this conversation and then like Mr. Johnson and of course, Miss Ayers and Colonel Cox, they were on board with this and what we talked about just had to run forward and for the, for the complex and one board that is going to be more efficient. But it also will be help us as we talk about economic development when I do museums, just to have one voice. So I want to turn this over to Alex. So he can introduce you to the ones that you want to, and then Alex takes it.
Hi, I'm Bruce. Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Fox. This proposition, we would wholeheartedly in favor. It was great, wonderful working with Mr. Bruce Downing as well as Chairman Tripp Johnson of Gardens, and of course, Josephine Ayers of the Natural History Museum to consolidate that story. We are the Anderson museums and gardens, we want to speak with one voice, we have one set of goals to promote this campus for the community, and we thought that this would be the best way to consolidate that, that vision and that communication. We will have a biometric committee structure to promote everything that we are doing. And as Mr. Fox said, it does make us more efficient, it streamlines a lot of what we're already doing. So we're looking forward to this, to this change. Thank you.
Got some more questions? Any, any, no, the proposed documents in Dropbox, the work ethic, any questions or issues?
Thanks very much.
Again, thank you all for all the work that we've been doing, so we're looking forward to this. Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, nothing further then, as to item one, we've got a presentation from our perspective of energy efficiency audit. So is Al, can I have a brief interview for that?
Yes, sir. I want to turn this over again, how people were talking about museums doing some things in my recognition, the roofing of the museum. We were approached by Al and the power company, helping the museum, ways to make the city as a whole more efficient. And, and the best people in Al and the power company here, that's their expertise. So we had a conversation with Adams who's with us tonight, and then when I actually give us just a bit of comfort and a little brief overview of what it's talking about, and it's just one of those things, and once we get this overview, then I will pump this off to public works that makes sense, so we can be more efficient and save the city some money in the long run. We need to get back living to 21st century as far as we know with our lighting and other things as well. So Patrick, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. I appreciate it. Now Patrick, I have an attorney, and I have an attorney on my staff, he's specifically the account manager that is assigned to the city of Anderson, along with a lot of other accounts in the southern part of Eastern Division, several counties, south of Calhoun County. And we also have Keith Patterson here with us, he's an engineer with our Energy Services team, working out of our corporate office. And as Mr. Fox alluded to, this initiated, I guess, with the conversation I had with Mr. Robinson regarding the museums there at the Anderson Museum of Gardens, he contacted me about a conversation he had with Mark Nunley. He's an engineer firm out of Birmingham that has done a lot of work there with the museum, assessing their facilities, their HGA C units, the dehumidification needs. And on recommendation from Mr. Nunley, Mr. Robinson contacted me specifically regarding potential energy services project. And so, we've done, we've done several energy services projects across the state, and we want to talk a little bit about what an energy service project is, what it looks like. Mark or Keith will do a lot of that, Keith will cover a lot of that for us, but I had a conversation with Mr. Fox, and I said, usually when we're looking at, we don't need to just look at the, at the museums, we need to look at this comprehensively at all the city's facilities, and, and look at this, and look at our scope from the standpoint of energy service project. When I talk about an energy service project, unless we discussing what the Alamo Department of Mechanic and Community Affairs governs as a, and stipulates in terms of a performance contract. Public, public entities, schools, municipalities, K through 12, college universities, can, can contract through an RFQ process with an energy service company. That energy service company will go in and assess a public entity for potential energy savings, that could be electricity, it could be gas, it could be water. Those savings, per the guidelines today, have to pay for the project. So what you're talking about is, is, is the community, a public entity is not going to be out of pocket. And so, that's what we want to kind of talk about, we've got to hand out, we want to be cognizant of your time. And so, Keith, I'm going to let you just kind of talk over what energy services is, what we're talking about, and how this looks. Thank you, Patrick. You know, Keith Patterson, then, our Energy Services group, if you're all familiar with Al and the Power, what is the energy service organization? Our, you know, the traditional utility company is everything from the power plant to your meter. The energy services out of this is where everything from the meter inside your facilities. So what we're looking for ways to come back to help you be more efficient, more efficient from a consumption of, of the BTU, using the energy, not only electricity, but of course, gas, oil, all your utilities to help you, to help you benefit. You know, what, what, just we look at, we're looking at all your mechanical equipments, we'll look at all your lighting, your switch here, you know, we can switch to your electric transportation, we can take into some of those things if you're looking for the inter, uh, the interjection in the system of, of electric transportation, battery chargers, anything that plugs into your facility or plugs into, we can provide assistance for that. You know, three or four slides back, it kind of gives you a snapshot of some of the projects that we've worked on across the state, the energy services business in Alamo Power, we've been here for 25 years, primarily the vast majority of that has been on the federal market, but over the last half dozen years, we've stepped out and taken those resources and incorporated back in the non-federal environment, because we see that they see the, the same benefit. What are some of our opportunities, certain lighting replacements, lighting change outs, and lighting is always a, is a, is a quick and easy fix for many cases, your mechanical systems, air conditioners, chiller, boiler systems, we will incorporate that and look at all that to try to see what systems and what opportunities we have. Water conservation, producing water flow both, you know, both clean and in the actual sewage, trying to help find ways of minimizing and mitigating your opportunities. You know, Patrick mentioned, how do we go about it, you know, there's really two ways of going, that the, the city can go about trying to get this work done. You go through a straight BTO process and you can, you know, truly, and you play general contractor for each one of these entities, or you can go hire an energy services company such as ourselves, and we're going to come in through a process of, if we're selected through that RFQ process, now you allow us to come in and we'll develop a process. First step of any of this would be a preliminary audit of a vast majority of your, of your facilities, and we're going to come back and we're going to provide you with a list, a list of energy savings, opportunities, energy conservation measures, if you will, and the projected cost, projected playback for each and every one of these. We'll rank these opportunities, and at that point, it's the city, up to this, you know, this is city's decision of how many of these that you want to tackle, how many do you want to, uh, control. I mean, we are here truly acting as your agents to try to make sure that, see all this work gets done. The energy audits that are done, you know, I've been in and out of facilities for the last 32 years, we're outsourcing this out to independent, to independent engineering firms, so we can truly get a true independent view, that's not going to be skewed by an Alamo Power perspective. We are looking for ways to reduce BTU consumption and maybe more energy efficient. With the, the performance contract process, not only will you get the work done, through that process itself, there'll be measurement verification that will come through, we are guaranteeing these savings, you know, these, these projects have to pay for themselves over 20 years, we guarantee that savings, or we pay the difference. We're the ones that wants to be going to, to that contract forward. So, so what's the process for that? After we do the preliminary audit, if you choose to move forward, you know, the city would issue that RFQ and select an energy services company, that energy services company would come in and to do a true investment grade of an IGAL, that investment grade audit will come back with design drawings. If you choose at that point, this, we don't want to continue on, all you've done is you will pay for those drawings. You know, there are weight stations completely along the way to do that. If you like the conceptual drawings, at that point, we'll go through and enter into a design contract, and true, full scale design, full scale scope, full set of blueprints for whatever we're looking to do, and at that point, moving from that point through construction, construction, commissioning, and then to a point of a measurement verification relationship for the next 20 years. So the first thing that we would look for, the first thing that we would, we would provide, or propose, is to truly come out and, and out of the, the accounts, the major accounts, truly kind of go in and get a preliminary audit, to determine what the flavor is, determine what, what the order is made into, depending on what opportunities put out, and then at that point, try to put together a comprehensive proposal back to the city to see how to move forward. Kind of quick, you know, kind of a quick run through that, want to be cognizant of your time. Any, any questions about the process, or what do we take, what are we looking for?
Keith, talk a little bit about some municipalities that we've worked with.
You know, we're, right now, we're, we're deep into a, a project, the city of Hoover, where I mean, it's the point of, I mean, I want the city municipal, municipal facilities, but I mean, we also, you know, that project is being expanded out to, to Hoover Mans, and a lot of their, you know, their true sports facilities at point, even from the sports line perspective, Hoover, and Hoover Mans, we're able to incorporate and, and draw back into the, to the process itself.
Talk to me a little bit about what is involved with the preliminary audit from a cost standpoint and a time standpoint, what would we, if we said, what would we look at?
Well, we'll start with the cost upfront, because that's the easy part, it costs you nothing. At that point, we're going to bring our engineers through, and it's truly going to be, you know, at a, at a 5,000 foot view, you know, they're going to come in, do some, take some measurements, you know, little review utility bills, review wire bills, and at that point, try to, you know, look for, look for trends, look for the opportunities to come. And at that point, you know, the preliminary audit itself will be a couple of months, you know, truly trying to get boots on the ground, and make sure everybody's got the data, and possibly a few return trips with that. But at the time of the preliminary audit, you know, we'll generate a, a nice 20, 25-page report of these are the findings we had at per building, per location, and our proposed solutions, as well as what we think the, the construction call should be, and then proposed playback for each of those conservation measures.
Mr. James, and I kind of looked at this, I came over, you've got 20 of your accounts that you have with Alamo Power Company, attributed for probably 80% of all the billing. So, you know, it's a low hanging fruit, you're going to focus, you know, on your, on your significant buildings, and, and that's where you're going to really see your biggest impact is going to be right there.
I mean, if you have a small facility not generating, not consuming a lot of energy, gas or electric, you know, there may be some great savings opportunities, you just never will pay for anything. So while we're looking for truly larger facilities, have a greater benefit, more savings we can find, the further we can stretch these projects, because there's more money to be saved, or that savings will be more fun to all these projects we move forward.
Very good. Thank you.
The other major project, you got to finish that on, BJCC.
BJCC, we've been on for, uh, should be completely finished with it. This is all completely done, Children's Hospital, Children and Women's Hospital, University of South Alabama, Springfield College.
How long did that stay?
Um, you know, it, it all depends on the scope. You know, in many cases, it, it, you know, maybe nothing more than, you know, you know, a few million dollars worth of heat recovery opportunity, you know, that you're truly getting out just a couple of months. You know, BJCC, yeah, I mean, that's.
No, it's another thing, you know.
Yeah, I mean, it is, I mean, what you've done, but if you've been there any time recent to see where that has gone, I mean, it's just an incredible facility, to go from what it was, all, you know, the actual arena lighting was done, was replaced in the LED perspective, and I mean, you're truly looking at a 60, 70, 80% energy reduction just in the lighting, and once you're able to be from a controls perspective. Leach and Field Lighting was, was a project of ours own, Progressive Life State was a lighting project that, that we were involved in. BJCC is full scale, all mechanicals, so.
So what happened then is it put you off schedule, because what's a problem, I have a lot of need that, no matter 50 reasons. What's out of schedule, and if it's off schedule, we won't be back on track, or we won't be notified. And we're trying, we're trying to listen to this sort of transparent counsel. So if, if, if there's, if it's six months, and that six months, say, there's still six months, man, well, you know, good, you have been streaked, but from a high, from a high perspective, we haven't been told that.
Well, the great thing is, is we've got Evan here, and he obviously knows everybody. Uh, and, and it's the point that, if you have an account manager that's local, that is the point of, that we're, we're constantly communicating, it's the point of, we have calls once a month with all the divisions, these are where we're at with these processes, and going on. You ask what holds us up, we're like everybody else today, supply chain issues are, are tight, you know, we're working with contractors, trying to work around a lot of those opportunities to, to be had, but I mean, there's been no substantial delays, anything of that sort. We've been fortunate, you know, with most of, you know, the lighting, uh, our lighting contractors seem to have maintained a, a, an able supply of a lot of the, of the new fixtures lamps that we need. So the lighting side goes out with the mechanical stuff, is all designed one-off, so it's not like we're waiting for this to come, so it's, it's the point of, uh, in pretty good shape. So what, the commitment you have is the fact of the Alamo Power commitment, we're here, we, you know, you know, Patrick lives and breathes in this community, anytime, you know, if you have any question, any time, Patrick is there to answer the question, and, and trust me, you know, to the call, I can add a text message, we can get a lot of answers done as we need to, I mean, this is, this is what we're here for, so. You know, what we do at the end of the day, we're trying to enhance the relationship of the, the, the local, route to local Alamo Power family has in these communities, we're not trying, you know, we're not trying to do anything different, but we're just, you know, trying to enhance and provide that service, that service of authority.
I guess I asked a question, I asked that question for, for a period back at 14th Street project, you know, we, they were, I was in Walroo, so we got this part done about the same time, they didn't really do the mention, and now, we're going to have to push back, but no one, they finished that portion of the time, but because they were, they wanted somebody else to get something done, they got, I can't even just know it. So now we're going to be up because people, you know, want to create a plan for the city. I know we get it, but I'd like to ask one question, you know, and rest of the time.
Well, and that's, you know, we would, we would establish, full construct, you know, we got to that design scope, there's going to be schedules that we all, we all adhere to, and I mean, there are going to be five weekly, monthly meetings, I think meetings as we go, this is where we're at in the substantial process, progress. If we have, if there's a delay, you know, we will know about it, or something will communicate those, that back here as soon as we hear, I mean, there will be nothing, certainly nothing to hide. Nothing good comes from that.
Will, would you say?
So, I, I, the actual council, we have to start the process, and look at our public works, and just from experience, and I consider counsel without a bar director, we had the same problem we did at the White Center, and we looked back at utilities, what they were as well as the city meeting center, and what we did, we actually changed our, our, our LED lights, changed everything that did with LED lights, and within the year, we saw a substantial change, just like in the lead center, we went to remote temperature control in the lead center, and we saw a drastic change, and we got the new air conditioning in, you just do that, we also did a remote control for our, and it just, it was a massive change, and you saw your utility bill go down. We didn't see it right away, within a year's time, we saw a big difference that it done, and I think the city's planning, saying, uh, they attract that, what we've done with is, uh, lights within the city, you know, a lot of our lights have been changed LED and UAM, so I think.
Right. And we, you know, sometimes that, we just, when we have a meeting with, with the community, just doesn't mean, these are projects that we want to take in the past, that saves us in the future in that way, when we go, when we get ready to do something like this, they'll understand that this is future savings, and that, because the first thing they know is a little, a lot of my bill, and that's not, that's, we don't have that case, but from a, from a business, that would be, you know.
I would simply ask that we include this in our capital improvements package, so that we have, you know, as we get those, figure out reports on where we are on things, it kind of keeps us where, in position as, as we, uh, we're on the process, so, just, just a part there, on this 12, whatever happens with the audit, or, or it'll be complete when that, you know.
So Patrick, do you believe, do you believe that public works can be started? So we're going to get it started.
Sounds good, it's okay.
Thank you all, very much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on into item 4, the request for the assistance.
Um, the request for funding for the PJ5, I don't know if we've spoken about this before, had a conversation about it, but it's the felony campus initiatives that the DA has started, they do it with the Calhoun County school system, as well as with Cleaver County, and specifically, it's going to, um, come back and see issues in the school system. They've seen a lot of great things in this position at both school systems, and I think that, you know, we have, I mean, last year, Dr. Gill, uh, the DA, Jackson, your source, Selfie Shannon Jenkins, Lisa Parker is a United employee as well, um, in discussing with this program itself, and I think it would be a really good idea, considering that, you know, our school system unfortunately suffers from occupancy issues, you know, such as this. So, I just think it's something for us to talk about. I think we know that Dr. Gill and the school board has sent us a funding request based off of the ordinance, or the resolution that we established, uh, two meetings ago, with detail, you know, description of what this is, and the position that this would entail. The only thing that I would say, or that I would ask, is that we do have heard, and we spoke about this, or heard that meeting, the work session, when we talked about funding for the schools, is that we do have, uh, that description of, you know, the $80,000 I was sent to them a few months ago, and all that speaking to them, and whether or not for that.
Yeah, I would agree with that, but again, from experience, see, so they can have some that, they're trying to have some of this year, where, uh, staff that bring 55,000, this is available to the county for the school system to use, and, and we assume if you want to move it forward tonight, we'll move it to the next, next one.
How do you go forward?
Yeah, we go forward, I just, and, and I kind of mentioned this at the end of Saturday, trust is a problem to, we don't, but if we hire someone, I'm trying to get a, I'm trying to get a boss to come down to, who's had success in other places, that doesn't necessarily ever going to be, you get, then, inside that range of that. I, you know, I just struggle with, it's just, I think our problem with trust with the kids, I, I don't know, it's just, I, I think if we can get to the parents, I think we're going to have to find somebody, but to find that makes a person that's going to be able to get to the parents, as well as understand what the kids are, given the, what we're going to be wasting that money. We, we got to have some, I just don't think, any outside of coming in to do it. Let's just ask, that is the theory, I hope.
I don't have any problem moving forward, I agree with the air, we need an answer on, on the $80,000, and how it will spend, we have the answer for that. The original resolution asked then to request specific need for it, it was just given to it, we don't know how it was expended, uh, expended, and I'm, I'm sure everybody's received some calls in that regard, I certainly have. I need, uh, I need to be able to answer that question, when I get that call, we all need to be able to answer that question. Let's, we see these tax dollars that are being utilized in that capacity, we're obligated to identify how it was spent, just like we do with any other budget or thing, so, I'm fine moving it forward, as long as we're not sweeping that piece under the rug and moving on, they had over a month since we met last, where we asked for that information when we sat up, and we all sat around the table together, and we ain't got anything except for request of more money, uh, they know how to spend that money, that is, that is.
Or even if, if it hasn't been expended, you know, like, this is not what they tend to use.
Yeah, I agree with this, we went to the last week, he's compiled, getting that, that again, the dance, and what it's been for, so I'm asking that council on that, so I'll be entering that tomorrow when I talk to her, and get that to you before next week.
Yeah, we got to run it like this.
Yeah, I, well, we, I guess I'm the double one on the table, like, I thought, I was going to bring in a report that I need to, from everything.
Yeah, the other thing I'd say is that, you know, when we talked about continuing our resolution at the set of state, we also talked about a report on the effectiveness of the programs in which they use it. I mean, how, how do you report on, you know, I guess measurable is, is, is criticism reduced in our school system, you know, and how do we track that quarterly, you know, those kinds of things, I, I want to say that too.
I do have the DA, and United Way, they have a system of tracking, I would say, throughout the Calhoun County schools, the Hoover County school system, I don't have a background here, but I want to say there was like a 20% change.
23.
23% change in that Calhoun County school system.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it, it, you know, it works, and I'm hoping that, you know.
Oh, it will work in our instance too.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's a tremendous effect of the funding too.
Yeah.
Now, average state of membership is what it's based on.
So I do, I do understand some of that, see, and, and pushing this forward around 100% of Jay, making sure that we are, we are, of all those, we're considering.
Do you all have a consent agenda or a standing one, so it can be discussed? What do you want?
Either, either way.
I think we've discussed it.
You're, you're concerned.
We also were ready.
All right, if you want. Okay, anything else, there's your line for it. Okay, item 4 is the work point, I have some consent agenda and, uh, hearing tonight, he is here, is offering a word to the ZBA, any issues, questions there, continue here tonight? Um, let's see, item 5, Alamo licenses, those are consent agenda tonight, any issues with either of those? All right, so just move on to this.
No, 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 so, that was, they changed.
They changed ownership.
Or they, or.
That's the reason they gave the devices, they changed ownership.
Okay.
But yeah, they did change the name to three dollars.
Our, yeah, okay.
Was that always three dollars? Mike, a bid, a bid.
Yes, sir, the first bid, which is, uh, for the construction of Oak Street Park, I wonder if I, I'm also aware that, that bid is going to be rejected because it's incomplete, there was a bid on, and that, and that, uh, eight shots that's going to be, so we're going to re-get that back out, so that, that's the reason why that, there's no bidding out. And the bid for the demolition of structures, uh, through City Chief, that bid opened August the 8th, will be on the next agenda, and the other thing I want to make you aware of that, that's not needed, but make you aware, that the bid for the demo of the, of the, the downtime market will begin on, the bid will open on August the 9th at 2:00, and that will be for the demo and for the rebuild of the offices and the storage areas, and we do it incrementally, so that's where I've been, we can figure this out, but we will start at work the night at 2:00, so the next agenda as well, the bid will be on there for that as well.
Even, all right, let's go on to item 7, we ordered the surplus in 1329, Alex, investing in this in Dropbox.
I had this conversation with our council member, uh, Roberts, because this is, what was so exciting, what's exciting about this is that I was approached by this Tara Burnett, who she's planning to try to build her own house, and it ran out of park area, and she had a property, a property that she wanted to work with, and that property was, was deemed to be varying at about $5,000, but she's actually winning, she's already got an estimate of what it would cost, it came out about $3,000, so we were asking, I remember that to the council, that we still, this property, this property. And that property was, was deemed to be varying at about five thousand dollars. But she's actually winning, she's already got an asset that would have called, the pay was come out about three thousand dollars. So we were asking, I remember that to the council that we still, this property, this property for two thousand dollars. It's up in New York and already in the, we're ordering the next, uh, Mrs. Burnett this year. If y'all have any questions, but I was just so excited because she came and said, I'm a same parent, trying to do the right thing. And she's doing it the right way, she came in and we talked about it, and I, I was just so excited what she did. And these are the kind of things that we need to move our city forward, when we have people like that who come with a plan and say, not, not with a handout. Come with a plan and say, I'm not begging for anything, just help me to do it. And I think I, I just applaud for what she did, so Mrs. Burnett, if this is the type of counsel, if Brittany will let the same.
Absolutely, please thank her.
Oh, thank you. What did you say that's called?
I did. We got to say it works really great. You know what I'm saying?
Help me, help me understand your group, we own this piece of property.
Yes, sir.
It's valued at five thousand. It's going to cost this person three thousand dollars to clean it off. She'd like to purchase it for the.
For two thousand.
Okay. Uh, and you glad we're building a home?
Yes.
I see.
Thank you.
So you.
That's, that's why I already.
I mean, I paid the road for it.
Yeah. So this weekend, end of the sixteen?
Yes, sir, for the sixteen, yes, sir.
Okay, uh, lastly, we got, um, the ordinance, uh, for the road case of business license. Bruce helped out working that.
Yes, sir, uh, she talked about that, well, this is one of those things that needs to be done. We have not raised these fees in quite some time, they look down, very rough, follow up, whatever. She worked that, I think it's about the time for us to do it. Uh, we have not raised information to do drastically, but I think it's one of those things that needs to be done, you know, a lot of, we just sit back and, and, and while, and I've talked to, uh, she and his partner.
I mean, I guess the bottom line, it's probably been ten to twelve years, it's been being increased fees?
I didn't know.
It's been a few years.
Brian Johnson, I was going to say, thank you, see, when we did last time, because I was.
Well, we're still late one.
Yeah. Yeah, it, it, uh, it hits the boats. Uh, we jumped pretty significantly at that point because it had been fifty or sixty years prior to that, since we had adjusted. I mean, we, we had industries paid in nineteen thirty, business licenses that, I mean, we had some, some business licenses legitimately had been licensed.
I think we got the process. The, the ordinance on the agenda that works us in terms of this, because we all asked for about having a procedure for.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Well, he's talking about raising, largely raising permanent.
Permanent.
Which I didn't see on the agenda, but was prepared. He's not talking about raising business licenses.
Okay, thank you.
So, yeah, this is, you come to the pitch, you just catch the pitch.
Yes, it's just a public.
Right, yeah, right.
It's just, it's.
So Bruce should be talking about that.
Bruce, Bruce, these are the ones that I said, I mean, put this together.
We're not talking about business licenses, we're talking about.
This was driving the whole access of right before.
Right, right.
Two, three, strike.
He, he, they asked, they asked for an ordinance to update the building permanent fees, which I prepared for him. I don't see if it works us in.
It's not, it's not.
Yeah. And this is something totally.
So now we're. Bruce put this together, I'll take this.
I will share your story again.
So this was, you remember, y'all asked about, you know, doing something similar to what we had for the, um, you know, what we created for the residential properties. Um, where, and, and what we did there was, and I was looking at it more closely, and it's not written, that other one we're talking about, it's not written to be exclusively residential properties. It would apply to any commercial property, but what it does is it provides a nuisance abatement process, okay? Um, which at the end of the day, if you want to abate nuisance like that, you got to go to court and file a lawsuit. So, um, this is something different. This is to take a similar framework that we have for the, that we did for Rocky Hollow, and, um, build it into a, a process that leads to the council voting to revoke a business license or suspend a business license. Um, which you don't have to get a warrant to do, now you could get taken to court because you did it. Um, now you have, the, the, the standard for that is, are you acting arbitrarily prejudiced? You know, so it's very, uh, you have a lot of discretion in that regard. But, uh, so this was to create that kind of expectation that you were asking for. Um, and it says to let the public know that we're prepared to, you are to have the right to revoke business licenses when you feel necessary. We, we had also forgotten when I was creating this, or remember, we'd actually created a process for expedited revocations for what we defined as public safety offenses. So it was designed to address specifically shootings and, you know, um, so we now have, we now have three layers of, of, uh, process for revoking business licenses. One is just the general authority that you have as a council. Two is this kind of expedited process that we created when the fire marshal or the police chief come to you and say, we've got a public safety threat. Um, and then three, this is the more detailed process where one, engagement and a corrective action plan. And, you know, the light we get to address the Rocky Hollow situation. Uh, so this was my first draft, obviously, you know, any changes y'all want, uh, that's my job to make them. Uh, I want to put this out there as a, you know, first draft, if you consider, uh, and we'll approve it as you want. Uh, or we can approve it and take it up as it is. Uh, so, but y'all had an opportunity to digest it yet. That was the intention.
Yeah, so please, we have, we have three levels. We have one just to turn over where we can revoke it because of this, whatever, because of that, so. We just see this now.
None, none of your reasons based on what I recommend here, we could revoke it, Brian, we're prepared, we're sure.
Yeah, basically, well, basically, I would.
Yeah, this, this defines, none of your reasons defines, and if one of them is any reason, one's a catch-all.
Yeah, one of the two reasons will provide a lot, you know, but, but there are specific things regarding that, there is offensive disturbing, you know, there's one of those, there's one, uh.
We've had issues with people not paying their taxes, I haven't dealt that in, so, you know, we got that, oh, yeah, you might as well have, you know, and, but this, this, any, the, the, the ordinance that already existed, um, I didn't cite the number in the draft, but it, it says that if there's, if, if a business is violating city laws, we can revoke their license. Um, and it provides very general statement of, you provide a notice of hearing to revoke it. Um, so we didn't need this in order to prove you have the authority to revoke violating city laws. This was, as I understood it, y'all wanted engagement, you know, and so this built in administrative procedures, you know, and something administrated on the front end to where we have engagement with a problem business and an opportunity for them to, you know, make a corrective action plan. So you can get on the right course before it comes to you and you have to drop the hammer and take away the license. Uh, I don't think it might tell you if you've ever actually had to revoke business licenses.
We probably should have.
Maybe.
There's a few, this is off the top of my head, I can walk through right now and say. But, so, we want to engage them because of the situation that has happened. We, we want to, we want to, I guess, that our business owners will be here for you, but if you don't promote a conducive, safe environment, we can do an option. I mean, when we were fully safe, and I had a lot of swimming to sit there, had a lot of swimming because we knew this was going on and did nothing. I guess the.
This, this is designed to say, okay, if we've got to complain this to a business, uh, that administratively, we're going to reach out to them and provide them an opportunity to make it right before we refer to the council for revocation. Uh, and so that's, it, it's really, the only thing that's really different about this from what already existed is the administrative procedures. Uh, I went ahead and tried to make things as, you know, define as much as I could and, uh, go ahead and set procedures for the areas and how that would be handled and all that. Uh, so I want to give as much detail, we're taking a cut out, and give as much detail as we could, but this is, really what's different from what exists today is the administrative procedures that precede the council action. Uh, so that if it comes to you, it's coming to you because, as the folks have said, we engaged with these people, they're not cooperative, they're not willing to, to, you know, correct the problem, uh, and so now it's in your hands to, you know, consider whether or not, and y'all act in that sense like a judicial body, where you're actually kind of, you know, hearing evidence and deciding the case, and you have the ability to, you know, rule in favor or against the revocation. So the city manager, and I expect I will be presenting on his behalf, would, would present a case to you. We think, you know, revocation is needed here, and then y'all decide that, you know, is there grounds for it or not. And as long as your decision is not arbitrary, precious, uh, meaning as long as you've got factual basis for your legitimate justification, and it's going to be, it's going to be withheld, upheld on judicial scrutiny. But, uh, anyway, uh, anything else I can tell you about this?
So, uh, four, it comes to the council, it is coming to the council. Um, basically, the complaint goes to the city manager. At that point, they are to advise the corrective action plan. Um, and if that corrective action plan makes off of number eight, um, those combined terms are considered a new corrective action plan, establish a new procedure to handle the session, then that will come to the council. Do you not understand that process correctly?
Yeah, I think that's right.
Okay, so, it doesn't necessarily have to be spelled out in regards to the number of offenses, correct? It could be, there could be a issue in an establishment, um, and that could come before the city manager and discussing that with the owner and regaining for a correction plan, it doesn't matter for the council. So there's no necessarily set of offenses for anything like that.
It could be one instance, or it could be multiple instances. Uh, and depending on, you know, if it's one instance, then what the, the corrective action plan might be different than if you go multiple instances. So I think you ought to have flexibility, the city ought to have flexibility, deal with things on a case-by-case basis. Now, in cases where we have shootings, if, let's say there's a business hypothetically that is promoting the drug, illegal drug trade, and there are shootings going on, and it's, you know, the, the police chief and the fire chief say, we've got a public safety threat here, there's, you know, there's immediate action, expedited action processes available. Um, so this is for the less serious kinds of situations where we feel like we ought to work with people and try to, you know, set it on the right course and, and get this fixed. There's some situations that's probably just too expensive to just be closed, but this is where you think you, you want to try to give an opportunity to fix it. This is the process that we follow.
Let me give you all examples of, since I'm a gentleman here, we didn't have this in place. We had a club that had a heavy shooting on film, replaced part of two, uh, part of, we didn't have this in place. So we allowed that club to continue to operate, got the shooting, and all this, and we get nothing about it. And then the same club, about one, four, four later, someone actually lost their license in the same club. So though, we, we don't have anything like this in place, and that's, that's going to be, that's something that's important.
I turned fifty, but I guess I'm, I'm forgetting that. So I think what we, what we're initially talking about is we, we understand that there are situations, so we had a situ, uh, just call it that. We had a situation that happened at a club. And the issue came up because the club was real. Was here going in that situation, according to the outside, I don't know, by the performer news with their support. I remember asking the question of, should we have, what I don't say to it is, there were still people that were drunk, where last alcohol should have been around. A lot of concern, after two o'clock. So if that, if that club is still serving alcohol after two o'clock, that's violating part of, you know, part of their license for business, right? So, but we also have a restaurant where two people were, you know, expired or lost somebody, not inside the restaurant or right outside of the restaurant. So do we, how would we, you got two bodies here, one body here, is it, um, making sure, I mean, I think that's what, I, I thought that's what we were trying to see. Where if we have one, or just as a club, if the people are not, if that owner not listening is, is, is parking lot, making sure that his vehicles are secure, then that may be having to come on either the model, drugs in the parking lot or that, or even the side of the car. That may be the cause for us to go ahead and pull it right away. Hey, look, we caught y'all, we told y'all we would catch y'all, you signed this paper, they're done. But in some cases, you can't say that these things actually intended to start in the building, or as the church, sometimes these things are just going to happen. So with this, that was, because I thought a reasonable move to try to, if you have one of the one incidents, one big fight, or a mission call, we're going to have an error.
So, but I, I, in my opinion, you need to take every situation on its own merits. Uh, now, I don't know the details of the shootings that you're talking about. Uh, but if I were, you know, looking at it, I just want to know, okay, why were there shootings at this point? What did the club do to contribute, create an atmosphere where these shoots were going to occur? Uh, was it something, I mean, if, if the club is promoting illegal activity, and, and you may want to say where you can expect type of shootings to occur, then you might want to say, this is a public safety threat, let's shut it down. But if, if the club, if it's just the club's not doing enough to safeguard their parking lot, or they're not doing enough to, you know, let's say, they, they've, there's been offenses committed, but it's not the type of offense like they stayed open to, like, or they, you know, whatever. And, you know, if it's, if it's things that, if, if the, the causes of the incidents brought to your attention, shootings or whatever, are things that you believe that there can be fixed, then this gives you an opportunity to say, okay, look, you know, you're on notice. You know, you're going to work with us to come up with a plan to make sure this doesn't happen anymore. Uh, we're going to enter into an agreement where you're going to be bound to do these things, whether it be hiring security, putting up video cameras, creating lighting, or what, I mean, who knows? Uh, but you're going to, for each situation, come up with a plan to make sense, to think, you know, change things, and then if they don't do it, then you, if they say, okay, yeah, we'll do that, but they don't do it, they don't honor their end, then you, then it, then it comes to you, and the city manager says, you know, we tried to work with them, they comply, therefore, we're asking you to revoke their licenses. Uh, so that's what this is intended to do. Now, I didn't, I didn't intend to say that, you know, one shooting equals this kind of remedy, or, you know, it's, it's, I wanted you to have flexibility to say, you know, because like, I think like we discussed, you get that random acts of violence occur, that you, that you have no way of protecting those, you know? So you wouldn't want to shut somebody down because, you know, two people got in a fight, had nothing to do with your business, weren't paid to do your business, didn't have, you know, where you had no control over the situation, but if you're harboring an environment that's leading to this kind of activity, then you can either, you can request a partner or you can lose your license.
Oh, yes, I think it does give us the flexibility to look at it, I think it also affords a new process for individual business owners, they have an opportunity, in the way this is written, to, uh, first off, they, they have an administrative meeting with Mr. Folks and police chief, fire chief, whoever, Mr. Folks, if they can come to a remedy at that point, or plan of action or something like that, then that's where the process ends, if they prove to be non-compliant in that, then they still have an opportunity to come before this body through a hearing process, where they, we bring evidence, they bring witnesses, it's almost like a trial, uh, where we can determine the merit of the concern and, and make a decision on it, but at least everybody has an opportunity, all the way through the process, if I'm reading it right, to, to have their say in the matter before their final decision is rendered, uh, now, that doesn't preclude if the final decision gets rendered and we say, we're going to revoke your business license, that doesn't preclude them from not taking city to court over that, that, they still have another level of remedy, but there are several steps that get before they get to us, uh, for an op, with an opportunity to correct action, uh, for whatever the alleged offense may be, so I think it's a good, fair document, I think it provides for that, but it also is general enough in its language that it allows us to look at it from a case-by-case basis, and there are unique circumstances, and, you know, the habitual offender does get punished in this environment, the one that is a victim of a right of act of one form or another, uh, does not, so.
So, longest, longer than, I, I'm okay with it, that's, that's the second point I think was, that's, we don't just want to just say, hey, now, okay, but, was it going to come up, was it going to come up, again, with us, yeah, so right now, I'm dealing with businesses, legal businesses. Legal, well, well, operating on a club, legal clubs, but what I'm saying, where this would be dealt with.
Action permanent.
Permanent, legal businesses.
Correct. Yeah, it would, this would pay for people who are.
Not.
It would not pay for an unlicensed, illegal business.
Would, you would.
I mean, if they're legal, they're not supposed to operate, so we find out about that, and they're.
Well, not private clubs, so would it, this could private club, is that?
They're, they're businesses.
Do we give license, licenses to private clubs?
Private clubs are, because if you talk about a private club serving alcohol, they have to still go through a process of where.
Listen, this is different than alcohol licenses.
Well, I'm just saying, if a private club, I'm sure, I mean, I, you, a business license, so that is private, but I haven't.
We have, I'm sure.
I get, I get licenses.
Exactly, yeah, licensing.
It's additional, you know.
Yes, sir, that, that license is welcome. With competition, where, in, 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 in a correct perspective, what we're looking for is making sure there's a new process, and whether the new bill is coming, and they have that opportunity, so when they come for an offer, uh, for anything, I would, well, to the police, fire, ensure that we run all of those, when they come for a council, we talked everything we could, and now it didn't get up for action, but a, a good process, a new bill is, we'll let it, so I think this is excellent, what we put together, it gives an opportunity to ask for work.
Hopefully, y'all have the effect that it had in Rocky Hollow, where, you know, the corrective action plan part of it is, we only have to have the great things to the council for revocation because of the corrective action part, you know, where you get, you know, engagement, and people have to get on board, and things change, and both the way, definitely, there's a similar effect, um, but at the end of the day, you may have cases where you need to revoke the privilege of doing business, um, so you always have that at work.
That makes very good, I'll let me set it up.
It was y'all's idea, so.
Yeah, I love the first plan, and I love, you know, working with our police department and, and our departments to make sure that we're sure, you know, the safety is, so I think it's excellent.
So, is it, is it good for, for council, for coming up for council next, or?
Of course, I think, uh, any material, if y'all think of something between now and now, I've reached, I mean, I'll tell you, it's, it's. Anything, perfect, either you have.
A couple of things, just for, you know, remind council, budget workshop, three P M. Thursday, uh, heat, it has been this room, uh, and then the other thing is keep in mind, seven, eight, ten, and three, stop the violence, uh, family day, is out of the club, and at the quarter, it's seven a.m., so those are the two things for my attention.
All right, you all got a seat. All right, let's stand in here for a further service.